States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we begin with a public hearing. Hold a public hearing, approve changes to chapter 3100 of the county's code of ordinances, the environmental, public health services ordinance.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, thank you for having me. My name is Shager Chowery. I'm an associate director with Olmsted County Public Health. Ordinance 3100 as in guard store, environmental, public health services. It really covers a plethora of the licenses that environmental health holds from food and lodge, food and beverage, lodging, pools. And we're looking to include kind of our new license type cannabis as well. It also includes tobacco in there. So we just had a few things to clean up and add in the ordinance. So there's three kind of primary changes. It's allowing variances for tobacco licenses. So it allows us to, again, consider situational bases and grant variances from the ordinance as needed if there's like an unforeseen circumstance or something along those, along those lines. The second one is to be able to have that same authority for cannabis and also to include cannabis licensing within this ordinance. And then the third change is really around revocations. It kind of prevents a license that might be revoked or taken away due to violations of the ordinance from that owner or operator from immediately reapplying and obtaining a license again. So it creates a two-year buffer from, from that occurring, which helps, helps prevent kind of resource intense use from county staff as well as just the cost for public hearings and things like that as well. So.
Okay. All right, so we're ready to open the public hearing about this? Would anybody like to speak about this?
I have a question, please.
Sure.
Shager. I'm not sure that I understand the variances that you're talking about. Could you give me a more concrete example of a possible variance?
Yeah, so I can give like just a general example. I'll use lodging as an example. So the lodging code is quite, quite old in nature. It's a state rule and they have certain spacing requirements that were based off of kind of the thought that three feet of distance between beds is a way to prevent transmissible disease. In reality, when you're working with the fire officials and you're working with building officials, working with their codes kind of makes sense. So we're able to grant a variance from the lodging code to allow a more flexible spacing. This has come in handy for places like Dorothy Day and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chair, I want to as well.
Sure, may I stay up here?
Yep.
Actually, a couple. I couldn't find it, but does, does our proposed ordinance reference the state statute? I think, I think it was 342, but I may not have that number right. And I asked that question because I look at the term, you know, edible, edible products. And I think about is edible and is edible a product different than a drinkable product? Or are they by definition all of the same? And we don't define edible product within our ordinance. So I, I'm sitting here wondering, well, maybe, maybe there's a reference to the state statute, but, but I can't find that.
I can ask Tom, but I think it references our cannabis ordinance where the definitions are all laid out within it. And those are, those definitions are pulled from statute. So it's kind of like a.
So there, so there, somewhere in here, there's a reference to a difference.
To our cannabis ordinance, yeah.
That has a definition in it.
Yeah, you got it.
I didn't find it. Okay, I'll trust you. The other thing, just this curiosity question, not even on cannabis, but once you open up the ordinance, you open up the ordinance, all parts of it. I was, I found interesting that, that the, the, the public health officer didn't have any kind of emergency power. If, for instance, there was a public health emergency, like in the next five minutes, I don't know who's got the emergency power, whether, whether public health becomes a law enforcement matter or, or whether or not it's truly a public health. And it's just for another conversation, another day, but I, I found it interesting. I don't know who's got public health authority in Olmsted County if, if that authority needs to be exercised in the next five minutes.
Yeah, so I mean, we would utilize statutes and then you as our health board to declare.
We would have to gather up, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I could give you an example of that, actually. At the start of the pandemic, the Olmsted County Board met essentially is the Olmsted County Board of Health.
Okay.
Declared that a public health emergency existed and then imposed certain measures related to how we were going to prevent transmission at the start of the pandemic. So it has happened in rare occasions in the past.
And then my, my other one had to do with the consequences following revocation. And that's a new, that's a new part, and I think it has to do with closing restaurants or something like this. It, it talks about substantial control over the new, the business if, let's see, the license, the license can, no one, no one has, that's currently involved can, can be involved except for two years hence. But then it talks about, I think the, they can't, they can't transfer the, the, the business to another person or, or group that wherein one person still has substantial control. And the, the whole thing is what if, you know, substantial control is fairly subjective that, you know, what is substantial control? Is it, is it of ownership or operation? Is it?
Yeah.
It's wide open. I mean, I guess it's where the judge did decide, but is that the way, is that, is that kind of what they left it and not tried to define anything further?
Well, we had a specific situation that arose and we just wanted to make sure that it isn't a situation, because this has happened on other restaurant license revocations in the past, that where restaurants license has been revoked and then the owner who had the revoked license essentially says, okay, I'm going to open ABC Restaurant. It's effectively a, it's got a new name on it, but it's effectively the same restaurant and controls the new restaurant, just like he or she controlled the old restaurant. And that's, sets us up for multiple revocations of the license when they fail for the same issues that had occurred the first time. And so we wanted to simply, if it's, if it's a true situation where the restaurant owner basically is throwing in the towel and says, okay, I guess I, I'm not doing a good job here, I want to sell the business to somebody else and doesn't actually maintain ownership or a financial stake in the new restaurant, then that shouldn't be precluded by what's in here. But we don't want a situation where the same person who owned the old restaurant that had the revoked license, for example, puts a new, slaps a new name on it and says, okay, I've got a new restaurant, you need to treat me like a brand new restaurant, even though it's at the same location and has the same kind of issues that the old restaurant had.
Just not, not to get too into this, but you think 50% ownership is substantial control or 49% for instance?
I would say 50% ownership would be substantial control. We didn't really delve into below 50%. We haven't had that situation come up, but.
That, Mr. Chair, that's fine.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. All right, any from, anybody from the public want to speak about this? Second time, anybody from the public want to speak about this? Third and final time, anybody from the public want to speak about this?
I move to close the public hearing.
Motion, can I get a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, discussion, motions?
I move to approve the changes to chapter 3100.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Thank you. All right, we'll move to consent agenda. A, approved minutes for the July 15th county board meeting. B, approve amended Parks Commission bylaws. C, approve the recording of right-of-way plots for CASA 18 reconstruction project. D, approve new planning advisory commission and zoning board of adjustment bylaws. E, approve local road improvement program grant agreement 106, 0647. F, approve property assessed clean energy program special assessments. G, approve entry of eligible cannabis microbusiness lottery applicants into the October, or August 7th, 2025 microbusiness registration lottery. H, appoint Brady Strickland, Paige Collins, Dean Hillsman, and Anthony Joseph to the county board of, county zoning board of adjustment. I, approve Vitale Herasovich and Wade Dougstead to the county board advisory commission. J, 2025 forfeiture properties. I get a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I want to, I would like to pull A, B, and D.
A what? A, B?
A, B, and D.
Does anybody else want a second?
That's fine. I can change my motion to approve the consent agenda except for A, B, and D.
Yep, yes.
Okay, can I get a second for that? Second. Okay, all right, we have motion, a second, approve the itemized consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries. All right, Dave, what do you got?
Mr. Chair, four A is simply, if you will, the minutes of the last meeting. And I was just curious, in terms of the, the format, or at least how, the way they reported, I, for instance, was not there. There's no, there's no attendance on there. I don't know if that's typical or not, I, I don't remember, but it seems to be at least my, my records of absences probably should be on, on the meeting minutes. There are people that kind of watch this stuff and, so I don't know if that's, that's a, a one-time thing or if that's just the way we normally write them, but, and then the other thing is, you know, we got, we have, we have motions here, but the, the votes aren't recorded and, and more specifically, the one on the exhibition center where it says we awarded the contract, there's no like six to nothing vote or anything like that. It's just, maybe we should just look at how we do these minutes. It, it seems to me the attendance should at least be on the minutes.
I'm not, not going to disagree. I don't know why we, why we had to pull this, talk about it, because we could have talked about it at any time.
Well, we could, but yeah. It's, well, it's, it's our chance, you know, it's on the agenda, yeah. So that's just, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve four A with those comments.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, B.
And then B has to do with the new bylaws for the Park Commission and I, I guess, I've got this, I, I'll just at this point call them concerns. I don't, I don't believe that we should subject members to an ex parte communications. And, and by the way, as you read this one, there was an attempt to fix it. It reads ex parte communication, communication being members of the commission and of the public who have business pending before the commission are discouraged. And then it goes on at the bottom with, under, under new language, it says ex parte communications means having contacts with members of the commission, suggesting it's okay to have members of the public. So I, I just find that confusing, the way it's written. And then beyond that, I do think just that any member should have the ability to state their position at any time on any issue before the body, whether they have a meeting or not. If, I mean, I can think of certain things, if I was interviewed before the, before a particular meeting and, you know, Commissioner Senjum, what do you think of this? If I, if I had established a firmly held belief, I think, I think I would say it and, and not, and not be criticized, but as it is, if I do say it, then I'm, I'm disqualified according to the writing from participating in the, in the proceedings of the meeting. And I, I don't know if that's good government or not, but, Mr. Chair, I, I, with that, there's a couple more in here, but I, I, I just want to vote no on this. And so if somebody wants to, you know, if, if, if somebody wants to move and approve it, that's, we'll just vote, but I, I, I just don't like that kind of language, you know, and the recipe of a, of a, of a commission.
Okay. Any thoughts, anybody want to make a motion?
Just want to ask a question of Tom. Is, is your interpretation, is that the interpretation according to what Commissioner Senjum is saying? Is he accurate?
Well, I can give you a little bit of background on this. Again, back in 2019, the board at that time asked me to work on preparing some kind of model changes to the bylaws to more standardize all of the county's volunteer boards and commissions. The ex parte contact language was one of those sections that the board in 2019 approved. It applies probably more commonly in a situation like planning advisory commission or zoning board of adjustment where having ex parte contact outside the presence of the public can be a problem because frankly, we don't know what is said by an applicant concerning representations about the business that they have pending in front of that board. And the goal of the open meeting law is to make sure that there aren't any off-the-record conversations going on, so that anything that's said between the applicant and the body that has business that they're asking, being asked to consider, happens in an open forum where all the members of the public can be present and hear things that are said about that. It's less common because of boards like the Parks Commission, for example, generally don't, you know, they're more of an advisory board, they make more recommendations to the county board on matters of policy and less so on, you know, binding matters of business that actually directly impact individuals or their properties. But it was decided at the time that it made sense simply to apply it across the board to all the volunteer boards and commissions. I, I think there's a place for it, but my, my request was that, you know, if you have concerns about it, because it's in all of them, don't hold up the approval of the Parks Commission and the zoning board of adjustment and the PAC Commission, because the planning department and parks department have good reasons why they need to move forward with those. And if we need to revisit these sections down the road, then let's revisit these sections with a, you know, commitment that if they need to be modified, we'll modify them. But I just feel like there's, there's a lot of work that's been done by the park staff and by the planning staff to try to get these teed up and ready to go. And those are really larger concerns than just the other changes that have been made to those two sets of bylaws. So I hope that's enough of an explanation. There have been examples, I can think of one involving a certain Rochester City Council member and a prominent development that happened around 2018 where there was an allegation that that city council member had engaged in inappropriate contact with a developer that was seeking to have the city council approve a development. I'll leave it at that. But, so it does happen and I did provide county administration with, at a request, some court cases showing where, when that's happened in the past, courts have found that that's inappropriate contact. And in some cases, the, the request that was being made by the applicant was actually overturned by the courts because they said there was inappropriate contact here, the public wasn't allowed to know what was going on and what was said in a open meeting law setting and actually reversed the approval that the public body had given. So I can certainly provide that, you know, additional legal support if you need it, but there, there is a good reason for the ex parte rule is what I'm saying.
Okay. Point of order, where are we right now? Do we have a motion on this?
We're waiting for a motion on B.
My motion would be to approve letter B with the caveat that we will revisit the concern that Commissioner Senjum has brought up and maybe review that for a future meeting.
Okay, can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have.
Mr. Chair, there's, there's more, I mean, for instance, number F, if, 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 if any member of the commission alleges another member has a conflict of interest, just an allegation, the way it's written, I allege that you have a conflict of interest, the chair then can no longer allow that member to participate in the meeting. There's no process identified, it's not, it's, the, the, the person that the allegations presented has no ability within the recipe, the bylaws, to, to defend themselves, to explain themselves, and there's no vote by the commission to accept whether or not, whether or not the, the, the allegation is decided by the membership to be valid. And so, again, there's just little things like this that I, I, I don't think, I don't think are right. And, and, I mean, we could put a process into this that basically says that, you know, when an allegation is made by, the conversation proceeds and, and a vote's taken on the allegation. And then honestly, the last one, as I read it, once we give this bylaw back to the commission, as I read it, the board itself has given away the authority to ever change these bylaws. And that's on, what's on page 40, the last, under amendments of the section, but there's little things like that and, you know, somebody, the former city attorney taught me the words are the words. And whatever the words say, the words say. And intent is not part of these kind of things. But, so we have a motion on the table, I, I'm going to vote no because I think there's more to work on this, but we can proceed if you'd like.
I think the motion is to, to work on it.
Yeah, I think my motion would be, it would include those things, but if Commissioner Senjum is correct that if this is passed, that we can't go back and change it, then, but that's not the way I read it, but.
It's not the way I read it either. Proposed changes must be approved by a majority vote by the commission. However, the proposed amendments shall not become final and binding until they have been approved by a majority vote of the Olmsted County Board of Commissioners.
Let's not say we can't.
Well, Mr. Chair, it says any proposed changes must be approved by a majority vote of the commission, yes. But once done, and that's the commission, that's not us. So that either the board or, or the body itself can propose an amendment. And then it says the changes must be approved by the commission, in other words, the park commissions. But once done, you can't cycle back and say, we're going, you know, county board's going to change that. That's the way I read it.
Travis wants to speak to this.
Thank you, Chairman Tine. Yeah.
Big a nuisance, I understand.
Well, and I might read it differently. I mean, the, the first sentence there says amendments to these bylaws may be either proposed by the county board. And then it goes on to say, or commission members. And then it goes on to say everything that you had just read, but, I mean, I'm, I'm taking the motion that Commissioner Wright made here to mean that there's a suggestion that, and a proposal by the county board that we revisit a section or two in here. And so I, I guess I read it a little different.
Well, Mr. Chair, if that, if that's the motion, if we can just take another more, you know, this is not the right time to work on bylaws. If we can do that, then I'm, I'm, then, then I would be in favor of his motion.
Okay, so we got a motion to approve this and, and with the, with the suggestion that we revisit it down the road and sharpen it up. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Carries. All right, D.
Mr. Chair, this is, this is one that, I mean, I've got this, I've got some, some of the other concerns and I, I, I will just start, I, I believe, just looking at the statutes that, and that, that the state of Minnesota, when they allowed counties to form planning commissions, and by this, it's, by the way, it's a may, we don't have to, we don't have to have a planning commission. It's a may, but if you do, and if that planning commission then creates controls, then as the board of adjustment statute reads, you, pardon me, if you do that, you must have a planet, you must have a board of adjustment. I mean, there's, there's, the language within the statute suggests to me that if you're going to do, if you're going to exercise controls and planning and zoning and, and so on, it would be the big ones, that, then you'd need a board of adjustment.
Is it, are they having a board of adjustment? We're having two boards with the same members?
It's, it's to me, the, if I come report the planning commission and, and I'm denied and I want to appeal, I'm going to appeal right back to the same people that already denied me.
I don't think it goes that direction, Dave. Tom, you want to speak to it?
That's correct. Planning commission matters generally get, go to the county board if there's any kind of an appeal. Zoning board of adjustment generally goes to district court or the court system for any kind of an appeal. So there shouldn't be cross, cross appeals that this issue will become a concern.
It's, it's, it's too laborious to work on here, but let me, go ahead and vote, I, I just vote no.
Okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve, D.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, passes. All right, so that's done with the consent agenda, now we'll move to informational items. First up, Senator Carla Nelson to provide the legislative update. Thank you, Carla, for coming.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sure you're all waiting with bated breath for this. No, I'll be very brief, but one, I just want you to know what a pleasure and what a joy it is to work for Olmsted County and our joint constituents. I would be remiss if I didn't start by mentioning the most unusual and I would say life-altering and life-altering, changing dynamics at the legislature. It was, I think we're all still grieving over the loss of our fellow colleagues in such a horrendous manner. I, I do want you to know, and this isn't exactly part of your, of your update, but there are motions in place at the Capitol looking at security. And I think all of us, including all elected, like, all elected officials are certainly more aware now, and I know, certainly I am. On a brighter note, I was part of a majority in the middle civic pledge ceremony early, earlier, actually last week, at the end of last week, up in the cities. There were about six, maybe eight of us, elected legislators that signed a pledge. We think more will, I anticipate, quite frankly, I, I hope all 201 do. Just talking about what, what we need to do, and I know there are things that you do as well, which is you, you debate ideas, you don't dehumanize people, you don't get into character assassinations, and we, and we debate ideas. And, and that's something that this pledge called for, and of course, absolutely no violence. But to the, to the, to the legislative update, while it was a challenging session there as well, too. As you know, the two-year biennium started with an $18 billion surplus and, and then there was a 40% increase in spending, state spending that year, and I'm hoping some of that was helpful for the counties. But as we came into the legislative session this year, was that, there was that $6 billion projected hole, and that's challenging. I know you have to work through deficits, projected deficits too, and that's always incredibly challenging. The things that I, I thought you might be most interested in, and I know you have a Cracker Jack staff that's probably already informed you of all of these things, but, you know, quite frankly, it was kind of hard to find what I would call wins that people are going to be excited about at the end of this legislative session. But sometimes, you know, that's defined by things that didn't happen. And I will say that counties were on the chopping block, you probably know that, as those early budgets came out, that county program aid was going to be cut dramatically. And I am very thankful that we were able to push back on that, and there were other ways, maybe not palatable to everyone, but what I would say is I think it was important that we not cut county program aid. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge, which I know you guys are feeling every day, is how do you pay for those unfunded mandates that were passed in '23 and '24? Earned, safe, and sick time is already on the books. Paid family medical leave starts January 1 of the upcoming year. And I could not find any exact numbers about what that cost would be to Olmsted County particularly. You do know that this year, the premium was increased from 0.7% of payroll to 0.88% of payroll. Now, that might be a hard pill to swallow as you're paying that increase that you weren't counting on, but I would say it was necessary. There was not an actuarial study when this piece of legislation was passed, and so the benefits continued to grow without the costs. And all of you know that benefits without paying for them are a recipe. And all of you know that benefits, without paying for them, are a recipe for disaster for everyone. So, that cost will be increasing. I don't have the exact amount for Olmsted County, but I can tell you that it looks like, oh, I lost the number here, I think I wrote it down, at the point seven percent. So, the new increase in premium has not been figured in to these numbers yet. It looks like all local governments, that would include counties, cities, and school districts, and townships, it would increase local government pay by two hundred and seventeen point one million dollars to pay for that paid family medical leave. You can figure out, I'm sure your folks know exactly what that would mean to Olmsted County. So, I think that is something to watch. It looks like it was, for counties alone, eleven point three million in twenty-twenty-six, and eleven point seven million cost in twenty-twenty-seven for the premiums that you would pay. However, that would be increased because of the increase in premium of point, up to point eight-eight percent. So, that's just, I know a couple of things that you're dealing with. Also, I was interested to, to be part of the cannabis discussion today. That was one thing that I thought was a little bit hidden till the end of session. In fact, I'm not sure if there was actually a bill on it, or if it just showed up. But, you know that cannabis aid, that originally there was a ten percent tax on cannabis aid, the state was gonna take eighty percent of it, counties ten percent to pay for your costs, and cities ten percent. Well, you might be thinking, or, I'm sure you guys aren't, because I can tell you already know this, but, you might think, okay, well, they increased the tax to fifteen percent, now we're actually gonna have a little bit more to actually implement what we've been required to implement on this, but don't get your hopes up. The entire fifteen percent now goes to the state. So, unfortunately, that is a purely unfunded mandate for you, and I appreciate you taking the diligent time to work on that. I think that is very important. I will say there were some missed opportunities, particularly personally, I was very concerned that County fourteen, or US fourteen, at County three and five, I want to thank you for coming up and testifying, you know, we had planning money for those in previous years, and yet, they did not make it in the bonding bill. That was shocking to me, especially when you look at some of the things that were there. We are hoping, I'm hoping there will be a bonding bill coming up this year as well. While the bonding bill that passed had some very good things in it, it was pretty disappointing. I've never seen anything like this. There was not a single priority from Olmsted County, Dodge County, or the City of Rochester in that bonding bill. So, that just tells us there's a lot more work to do. So, with that, I could go on and on. I do, I do know you're suffering with unfunded mandates. I know that, we, we all know, those should be words that are not allowed in state, in any government, unfunded mandates. It's one thing to mandate, but to do it unfunded is just a, well, pure property tax increase. So, anyway, with that, I'll let you get back to all the work you have in front of you, and thank you, I hope you reach out to me with any questions along the way. I know all of you have, and it really helps me, I think, do a better job and be informed with the things that are important to you and our constituents. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carla, I appreciate your work on our behalf.
Yes.
Okay, next up, City of Orinoco update from Administrator Jason Baker.
Thank you, commissioners, appreciate your time today. That's my first time coming to speak before you all, so I've met a few of you at events, it's very nice to see you. I am Jason Baker, I'm the newer city administrator for Orinoco, I've been there about a year and a half now, a lot of time has flown by. We've got a lot of great things that we're working on in our city, and so I just come in to give a little update and kind of a, just let you know where we're at with our city here. This next page kind of talks about, our population is still around eighteen hundred people. We've got approximately just under six hundred housing units in town. We are looking to grow that in the coming years. We do have some housing, which we'll touch into in later slides here. We are looking at some growth that's gonna be happening, and we're very excited about that. With that, there'll be some more support services we'll hopefully be able to gain as a city, as well as pull from the county. I know we'll probably be working with the Olmsted County Sheriff's Office to maybe increase some more of their time there, as we, we get the population going up and the businesses coming in. Right now, our median household income is sitting about a hundred and fifty thousand. It's fairly high. Orinoco's always kind of been one of those areas where we have large lots, large land, smaller population, and just seems to be a rather expensive area to live in. And that's one of the struggles that we're having right now, especially as we have an aging population in town. They're finding that, that balance of wanting to still live there and not being able to afford it, because of the way that the cities put themselves in, the position they put themselves in. So, we're trying to take some corrective action with our, our new housing coming in. Some of our primary goals is basically just positive community growth. We want to make sure that we're meeting the demands of future residents, as well as those who are still living in town and want to continue to live there. So, like I said, housing is kind of one of our big topics that we're going through. Right now, you can kind of see, I pulled some statistics on from the last three to five years, where it talks about our, our housing value. Majority of our houses sit five hundred thousand or more, which, to me, is very expensive. So, looking at that, you know, I can see our, where our aging population, older population, you know, coming to struggle to get in. And as we're seeing the growth in Rochester and the surrounding area, a lot of these smaller communities, Orinoco included, we're gonna be seeing the need for housing to help support the business and growth coming in here, especially with mail. We do, like I said, we have larger houses, majority of our houses are four bedrooms or more. Throw in the rental price, I think that's a little skewed, we really don't have that many rentals in town. We don't have apartments. We've got a few rental houses, but those are very far in, in between. So, it's one of those things where I think the town has been predominantly just family homes, they're, the city has stayed away from, from rentals, and I think they're looking to keep it that way, but we want to bring, make sure we're bringing in those, those single-family and multifamily homes in the R-one and R-two district. With that, kind of our big one right now, Pine Southwest, this is a housing development, it's a common interest community development that's coming this year, they're in the, the process right now of getting their final plot review. And they're gonna be in the southeast part of town, kind of gave you a map of what they put up, what the community's gonna look like. There are fourteen housing units that house four single-family, single-story residential units, if you will, kind of like condos, put together in this. It's an exciting development, we're looking to, you know, that, that fifty-four units is gonna be a big deal for us. We just, kind of segue off this, we just completed our wastewater treatment facility this year. We went, or, last year, we went live in April, and so we've had about a year under our belt now of this brand-new treatment facility. And so, this is something where we are in debt with that, and we've got a lot to pay. And so, having these housing and commercial developments is going to be key for us. But, this is one that we're excited about, the developers also building in Rochester, I believe, or just finished a project in Rochester, so they've been very great to work with for the community, they've shown a lot of support, been out there, been active, they've listened to the residents, and they've redesigned their area a couple different times, and they've worked with local residents in the surrounding neighborhoods to help ease some of their burdens and concerns. So, it's been a breath of fresh air to have them come in and, and do this, and we're excited for their project. With that, we do have some other upcoming projects. Last year, we had our Hamilton development, which ultimately did not succeed in, in moving forward. That was a project that was designed with a lot of R-one and R-two component housings, bring in about a hundred and ten units is what they were looking at. I've been meeting with them recently, they're still looking to do this project. We are currently finishing up a entire redo of our planning and zoning ordinances for the city, and we have a public hearing this month for that. We're hoping to have those go live September timeframe, September, October. And so, with that, I think that this development, this firm, they're looking at using those codes to redesign and reimagine their land that they have right now, and, and make it fit within that, so that they can move forward in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, because there's gonna be a multi-phase development as well. We have Gold Rush Crossings, they're just south of town, we've been talking with them. The biggest thing right now is they are in land that abuts the city, so they have to be annexed in, but this is all commercial development. So, I believe it's One Hundred Street and Minnesota Avenue, just to the north there. There's two parcels of land on either side of Minnesota Avenue, and they're looking to bring in a lot of commercial development. So, again, we're excited for that, there's a lot of potential there, and we're continuing to work with that group as, as we go through that to try and make that happen. And then finally, we've got some smaller ones around town, one of the bigger, smaller ones, Orinoco Crossings, is on the west side of fifty-two there, by the Casey's Gas Station, again, just north of One Hundred Street. There's a few parcels of land for commercial development coming in, as well as some potential for some residential R-two development, which could bring thirty to fifty housing units, depending on how they put them in there. So, we're working with different groups as well, communicating with them to try and, you know, start getting the ball rolling and get the public informed with, with those. So, with this, we're kind of taking it, you know, we understand that, see this, you know, businesses are, our opportunities are like buses, there's always another one coming, we know there's, there's more potential, there's more things coming for this town, and we're really excited for that. Outside of that, we've got a few things going on, small-town stuff here, pickleball courts, been a big deal for Orinoco, and so, that's something we actually just, the picture there you see is taken a couple days ago, we actually got new pickleball courts put in on our basketball court by City Hall, so there's been a lot of hubbub around town with that. And we're working on, with the Parks Committee, upgrading our parks. We've got a lot of outdated playground equipment that needs tended to, as well as, Memorial Park is our baseball field, there's, the fencing there needs to be replaced, and we're really hoping to work with some of these developers as they come in, instead of doing a parkland dedication, looking at getting funding from them to be able to help, because we have a lot of parks. I think we have about eleven parks for the City of Orinoco, which is a lot for our small town, and we don't need more parks, we need money to help pay for the parks. The other thing we're doing, I started, as I came in here, like I said, I've been here a short time, there's a lot of things we're, I'm seeing that they're lacking or behind in. When I started, the city separated from Gold Rush, they became their own entity, their own LLC, and so everything we were about is Gold Rush, and every, that's our logo, and that's on everything we have. So, what we did is we started a branding campaign with our EDA, and we got some grant funding, well, we got ten thousand dollar grant, and then we had five thousand dollars from council, where they found it in the budget to help donate, and then our developer that's doing the community one, they're the CIC one, he actually donated five thousand dollars as well, to give us twenty thousand total for our branding project, so we're in the process of going through and rebranding our entire city. We're gonna find out what we're about, and all that fun stuff, and that's really gonna help with our future as we move forward. With that, the other thing that I'm working with some of our newer council members on is really finding a vision for them. I found, when I came in here, that, that was something that was lacking. You know, we're working on putting together a vision, mission, statements, and goals for the council members, and I think that that will help give them direction, because right now, it's just each month, what's coming before them, and what do they kind of think, and there's no forward-thinking, if you will. So, we're really excited about that, the newer council members especially, to kind of help give that vision for the city and the city's future. With that, we're working on a CIP plan, the last CIP plan was done over twenty years ago, and so we are outdated with that. And we've been working closely with our city engineers, as well as our committees and commissions, to put together CIP for the next one, three, five, and ten years, to really, again, when it comes time, as we're going through budget, to help with that. Streets and roads are the big one, we've been kind of falling behind in that, and so we're working on improving those budgets. We actually have our engineer went out and put together, in the process of putting together a street maintenance plan for us, so we'll be able to start catching up with some of that stuff. Like I said, we finished our wastewater plant, we had Phase One A, with that, the next phase is Phase One B, and that's five years out, but we're starting now. We're getting things going, getting ready to start bringing in the second phase of residents onto city sewer, and so we're getting the ball rolling with that. And then, again, we're working out of older facilities, City Hall is City Hall Community Center, we've got a fire station that's out, the, the fire department and EMS, they're about growing that. Our city shop was put in ten years ago, and they're pretty much outgrowing that. So, I've met with some different companies to do a facility assessment, so we're gonna work on getting facility assessment for the city, and take into account and get everything graded, and utilize that for the coming years to hopefully get some new buildings. I know those are always hard to, to try to pass, but I think we have a lot of support from our community to help revitalize that and give us space that we need for the next twenty, thirty years, because we are in desperate need of that. And then, kind of one of the last big things right now, we're currently working with multiple communities and counties for the Zumbro River, Zumbro River Regional Water Trail Project. Like I said, you can see up there, it's something that connects multiple communities along the river. We were able to secure a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in grant funding for this project, and I know we've been working on like a joint powers board with different counties and cities along there, and that's something that's still moving forward, we're excited about that. Looking at putting, we went around and, I think they identified about fifty different locations, we kind of have to dwindle down to about a dozen or so, as to where we want to put these places for people to come in and out of the, the river. Really, the, the key for this is to make sure that with that, you know, it's something where it allows people to come into the community and be able to explore each community, each area, and give them a little bit more. That's something with the, the Zumbro River, it's, it's very much utilized, and so we're hoping to, to use that potential to help all the surrounding communities with this project. So, just again, kind of a summary here, you know, we're continuing, focused on positive community growth and expanding our housing options, working with multiple developers across the way. With this, one of the big things I know we've done in the past, and we'd really like to see, especially for some of our smaller communities, we've talked about this, tax abatements and other tax incentives are key for us, you know, to be able to help incentivize these, especially commercial companies to come in here. We have one right now, I think we're getting ready to finish up, that was our, oh my gosh, I forget what it's called, the data center that we have in town. They were on a, a tax abatement for ten years, and so I think that's something that we might see and be able to utilize, especially with our commercial properties as, as they start to come in. Again, enhancing community amenities, collaborating with city council to make sure that we have a shared vision, mission, and goals for the city, preparing our future capital improvement plan, which again, lays the foundation for the future of the city, and then really strengthening our partnerships with other surrounding communities through this project, and any other project that we work on. You know, I spend a lot of time working with surrounding cities from Stewartville, St. Charles, and even north into Good Hughes, so Pine Island, and Zambroda, and all these Kenyans. There's a lot of good teamwork that's done amongst the administrators in this region, and it's been an awesome, awesome area to come into, especially for my first year being here, and really have that support. So, that's something we'll continue to work on, strengthening our regional partnerships with that. So, that's all I have, I don't know if I take questions or not, but.
I have questions. So, that, that Pine Southwest, is that going to where Hamilton was gonna be, or?
No, so that's actually going to be south of Hamilton there, so Pine Southwest is going to be across from Two Sisters Restaurant.
Across.
Yeah, so if you know where Two Sisters is, and, Two Sisters and then Glenn Coach, Motor Coach, it's kind of like a C-shaped property, that was the, I think the third section, it was called Cedar Woods Development Third, that got sold off, and that's what that Pine Southwest is.
And the community seems to be embracing this.
Yeah, we've had a lot of good support. Like I said, they've hosted a couple of community outreaches, town hall meetings, there's been people that have come in and talked, and a lot of support. Even at the last one, there was, there was, a few people have concerns for things, and if you look at, I'll go back here real quick, you know, it's simple, simple little things, so if you look at this map, and you look at the, the Southern Drive there, on the right side of the picture, that leads out directly into, so if you're stopped there, facing the main road that arches around, your high beams or your car lights are facing a house. Well, that neighbor had concerns about, hey, I'm gonna have all these cars coming in and out of here, and shining their lights in my windows, and I'm trying to sleep, and, so they're actually working with that individual, they're gonna be putting up their own money to build a tree line berm and a fence berm to help prevent that. You know, they're, they're finding innovation in finding different solutions to help their residents, because they really want this to be successful, and they want the community support from it, and so they see how important it is for both sides, so they're, they're doing a really great job of working with our residents.
Who, who is that developer?
Oh, Dragon is his name, can't pronounce his last name.
Okay.
Such with a K.
He's done some similar stuff in Rochester.
Yeah, he's done, he's done at least one project I know of in Rochester, kind of in the south, southeast area, so, as of recent.
Well, fifty-four units is a nice development for Orinoco.
It is, and it'll be done in It is, and it'll be done in phases. The first phase is starting with the west side there on the left. We'll have, I think, two or four of those um, housing units. And then they have like a community center there. Kind of as you come in, that's got a pool and stuff. That's gonna be kind of their phase one. And then they're not sure if they're gonna do just two phases. It really depends on how quickly they're selling them. So they're trying to do affordable housing. Not, you know, low income, not high. They're trying to make it affordable. Um, but what affordable looks like is kind of anybody's guess right now. So. Um, I still think they're coming in under five hundred thousand, but yeah, so.
Um, on your, on your sewer treatment plan, is Orinoco Estates hooked up to that?
Yes, so we do have, they're the only ones who are not within the city limits that are hooked up. So we supply. Sewer to Orinoco Estates, which is, I think right now they're sitting at about a hundred and ninety um, units that come out of there. So.
That's great.
Um, they've been, they've been good to work with. They've, they've had their hiccups over the last year um, with payments and things. And I'll be honest with that, but. They've made up everything. They've gotten caught up. Um, they've, they're straightening themselves out and kind of figuring out their internal stuff. And it's, it's working a lot better. So we've been pretty happy with them.
That's great.
It's been a good partnership for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, thank you. Uh, uh, thanks for your good work, Mr. Baker. I mean, it's, it's really, it's. Be honest, it's, it's just really kind of refreshing uh, cause uh, the, the, you know, the town sort of stood still, I, I say that respectfully for kind of a long time.
Yeah.
And uh, so the, for the two questions, it, is the, uh, is the town generally all hooked up to the treatment system or is it? Is it just moving and period, you know, systematically?
Generally, they did a majority of it in the phase one A. Um, I'd say there's about a hundred units, hundred and something, hundred to hundred fifty units. It's still have housing units that still need to get connected. In phase one B. But we've got, well, we actually probably have over, because this, these are old numbers. We have over six hundred housing units now. We've got over, just over four hundred connected to the uh, water sewer.
Are those just left on the west side of fifty-two?
Yeah, a lot of them are on the west side of fifty-two. And we've, like I said, we've, we've started that project and our city engineer is kind of working on putting that together as well and.
Sure.
Kind of figuring out what community, what sections of the community and how they're gonna do that. They had initially planned for it, but. You know, obviously we gotta figure out with funding from the state and, and all that kind of stuff to help, but should be significantly less than the initial one now that we've got the plant done.
The other one is kind of curiosity because when the dam went out up there away, you're left with the bottom of Lake Shady and uh, for. I, I mean, I remember a sketch at one point for sort of a park. There is, is, is there any vision for that?
Yeah, actually there is. We're still in the process of, of that. Um, we've, we've had our city engineer pretty busy. Um, we had him go through and look at uh, cause it, it's, there's gonna be some connection from Orinoco Park, which is kind of to the north, northeast of there. Um, to be able to put in pathways to, to get down to that area. Um, and then those pathways will connect to a bridge that will go over the river, a little footbridge. And then come into pathways that are already kind of in existence. They need to be cleaned up a little bit more just because we haven't had, you know, so much use for it in recent years. Um, but that very much is still a plan.
Kind of some nature trails upstairs?
Yep. And so right now there is still some access from the west frontage road off of fifty-two there. That we took from the, I believe from the county years ago. And so. But with the last year's flood in June, that kind of washed out the trail. So we're, we're waiting. We played the, played with the federal money and didn't get that. So we're now we're playing with the state. Trying to get some reimbursement funds to kind of help fix that up a little bit, but people can still access it and they do regularly and go down there and, and walk around. Um, but yeah, there's, there's very much still a plan. We do have that at City Hall. Uh, we also are working with. I believe it's the state with, with Mindot. They're supposed to put up the fence along fifty-two, kind of bordering that on the. West side of the Lake Shady area and the east side of fifty-two. They're putting up a fence. That was part of the.
Right.
Sale of it and all that was, they had to put up a fence to, you know, create a, a safe space, block it from people just wandering down or wandering up onto fifty-two. So that should hopefully be done this fall. That's the plan.
Thank, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else for Jason? Thank you, Jason. Appreciate you stopping by.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up, receive summary results of the twenty twenty-five resident survey. Hello?
Thank you for your time. Um, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Firmin Espinoza. I'm a management analyst with the Policy Analysis Communications Department. And I'll be sharing with you the resident survey results for twenty twenty-five. So many of you, uh, were not here last time we did the survey in twenty twenty-two. So I'm gonna give a little bit of background about the survey as well as some information about the implementation process. Uh, as well as information on the response rates and how the survey results were analyzed, just so we have. A little bit of an idea what we're looking at as we go into the highlights. Then some of those highlights will also be aligned with our strategic plan priorities. And then we'll end with summary and next steps. So what is the resident survey? It's a community survey that we've conducted about every three years since two thousand eight, so almost twenty years now. Uh, and the main purpose has been as an opportunity to give uh, the residents a voice in providing input on overall quality of life issues. As well as rating various um, uh, county services that we provide or overall government performance. It's been a collaboration uh, uh, effort that we've worked with four other Minnesota counties on. Uh, so Dakota, Washington, Scott and St. Louis County. Um, together we work with uh, the same vendor who then helps us with each of our surveys within our communities. Um, and so we've been using the same vendor uh, for most of the iterations. The National, uh, National Research Center was the vendor name, but then it got bought out by Polco or. Uh, Policy Confluence in twenty twenty-two. Uh, but essentially they provide this type of service throughout the nation with various cities and counties throughout the country. Um, and so last September, we met with them and uh, uh, had, did a, completed a joint powers agreement with them. Uh, with the other counties and then started the planning process through the end of last year. And so earlier this year, at the end of January, six thousand surveys were sent out in Olmsted County. Um, evenly distributed between the seven districts and the survey was active from end of January through early March. So some new things that happened this year with the survey. Um, so given that we've used the same vendor all these years, uh, and they do this kind of work for many years with many cities and counties throughout the country. Um, they've developed over time, a large question bank of most commonly asked questions uh, from local, uh, local governments. And so uh, because they have this large question bank, they have this uh, template survey tool. That combines all their most asked questions um, na- nationally, nationally. So it's called the National Community Survey. So we decided to uh, try their, their template out this year. Um, versus in prior years, it was, it was more of a custom survey with some borrowed questions from the vendor, from their question bank. So with those, with that change, there are some differences. Whereas of those borrowed questions that we would take from them over the years, which is about thirty-five of those questions. Those thirty-five questions previously had national benchmarks compared to. And so for, so kind of coming back to this, because they have this large question bank of commonly asked questions. Whenever there's five or more communities that ask a similar question, they create a benchmark for, for that question. That then we can compare to, so not just to ourselves, but also how we compare to the national average. It just provides additional richness to the data and additional context for how we might be doing. So now all our questions from this template this year, uh, have those national benchmark comparison data. Uh, and then there were some, there were some room in that template for some custom questions. So we had, we included seven custom questions in addition. And then finally, uh, another difference this year was that uh, most of our survey, most of our surveys in years prior were paper-based. And then in twenty twenty-two, we, we uh, tested out a hybrid approach where sixty-five percent of households got paper. Uh, only and then thirty-five percent got online only through a postcard with the online link. This time everybody got both options so they could choose. Uh, so that also I think improved our participation. So what stayed the same was that, uh, in addition to that mailed survey that happens every iteration, with that online o- option, just like in twenty twenty-two. Uh, it allows us the option to also offer the, the survey in more than one language. So that, that stayed the same this time around as well, where the additional language was Spanish for this year. Um, and then of those questions that uh, we borrowed over the years, uh, that many came from their question bank of the vendor. Uh, so many of those were retained in the templates. So we have about thirty questions where we have historical trend data. Uh, going back many years uh, from when we first started the surveys. And then of those custom questions that we had, the seven, the seven custom questions, three of the seven were from the previous custom survey. So we were able to keep uh. Historical data on those three as well. And a big part of why also we wanted to switch over to trying to template, um, so not only do we get those additional uh, national benchmarks compared to and add kind of richness and context to the data, but. Because it's a template with pre-established questions, there's just less time spent in make, in building out the survey. And also they have a template report that feeds the results into. So it's less time for them to also prepare the survey uh, results. So with that less time in planning, um, there's also, uh, they can also offer this tool with at less cost. So less, less time, save time, save cost. We have more national benchmarks compared to. So I think it was a good uh, tryout for, for this year with the template. So going into the response rates and how survey results are analyzed. So of those six thousand surveys that were sent out, we got about eighteen percent uh, response, response rates back. So that was a little over a thousand surveys. Um, and here at the bottom, I have a table that shows what our response rates were for twenty twenty-two, as well as the other counties that I've worked with who had that response rates reported out. So you can see there's a decline for all of us. Um, and having worked with the same vendor with various iterations, we, we, you know, we. We've been told by the vendor that, that with many of these types of community surveys done over long periods of time, there does tend to be a trend of downward uh, response rates over time. So this wasn't completely unexpected. Um, but I think that's also another reason why a benefit of using the template this year was that. So because we were able to implement it at a reduced cost, we were actually able to send more surveys this time than last time. Uh, whereas in twenty twenty-two, we sent out a little bit over four thousand surveys. This time we sent six thousand. So even though we have a lower response rate overall, we actually heard from more residents this year. Whereas last time was a little over eight hundred, this time was a little bit over a thousand. So uh, just another way to kind of um, address this whole reduced response rates over time situation. As I mentioned earlier, there's a, there's a, a template of the, of, of our vendor that uses for the reporting the results. Um, in their report, they, they report all the results of the questions into these ten different areas that they call community livability facets. So that's there. On the left, the circle with the ten different livability facets. And for each of those facets, um, in the report, there's a dedicated section for each of those facets. Um, that then kind of outlines all the different questions that fall into that facet. So one example here that's shown on the right is a quality of life facet. And so in the red square on the top right, um, is one of the questions on overall quality of life in Olmsted County. And so many, many of these questions in the survey uh, ask for ratings uh, based on a four-point scale. So in this case, excellent, good, fair and poor. And you can see the percentages of how the results came in for that question. And so uh, of that four-point scale, excellent and good are seen as the, as the more positive results. And those two more positive results um, are combined. Uh, so there at the bottom in the long rectangle square is the combined percentage for excellent and good. So at seventy-six percent for that same question. That come, that combined percent, that's what's com- that's what's compared to the national benchmark averages. In this case, it says similar. So it was similar to the average benchmarks of other communities who asked this question. One thing to also note with these national benchmarks is that, um, again, it has to be at least five, five or more other communities that ask this question. But for each of the, our questions in the survey, you know, for each question, it could, it, you could be comparing to five or ten communities or thirty or forty communities. It varies from question to question. Um, so just to be mindful of that as well. And then another way that survey results are analyzed, and this is kind of coming over as a legacy from how we reported these results in prior, in prior iterations when it was custom survey. So of those four-point likelihood scale there on the left and the, as an example, so you have your excellent, good, fa- uh, fair and poor. Um, they get an, they try to calculate an overall average of the result. So by giving a score for each of those four options between zero and a hundred. They times it by the percentage, percentage breakout that we get for each of those, for each question. And it's, it's just to get an overall average number. So by giving an, an average number, you, you know, you're not gonna get like a, a, a zero or a hundred for any of your results. It's always gonna be somewhere in the middle. So usually anywhere between a sixty to eighty average rating is, is pretty good. It's within that uh, good to excellent range. And so as an example here, on the right is the box of some safety questions that we've asked since two thousand eight. And you can kind of see a trend line. So having that average rating as a number, you can quickly get a sense of what the trends have been for each of these questions. Um, and so uh, that's, that's, that's a useful way of, of converting it to an average rating. Another, another useful reason why they do this is. Um, for, so with the counties that we work with, if we ask a similar question. Let's say Dakota County asks these similar questions, but in a five-point scale and we use a four-point scale. By both of us converting into an average rating score or number, we can then quickly or easily compare to across each other. So, and that's the same for any other way of spicing and dicing the data by demographics or any other way uh, we may look at it. Uh, and then just one thing I want to point out here too, is that uh, these letters under each of the numbers, uh, these are just calling out an additional way of looking at the data. At the, the vendor does. They, they do a statistical analysis on all the results. And um, and so here they're calling out uh, differences between years in this example, where there might be a statistical significance between various years. And basically it's just, it's just a way for them to add additional um, confidence or pro- high probability that the differences between these years. Are actual differences versus just random differences that may happen from year to year. So um, just wanted to also just call out that detail.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask?
Yeah.
So is that telling me that the people of Olmsted County feel uh, more safe today? Than they did in two thousand eight?
Yes, that, that result, yep. Yeah, so it's slightly higher, yep. And there's a statistical significance because it's calling out, yeah, between those two years, um, two thousand eight is A and twenty twenty-five is F. So. Um, A is under, is under the, the latest score. So yeah, there, it's a, like a true difference between those two years. So there's other, there's other characteristics that I mentioned earlier on how to splice and dice the data. Um, uh, we have the county comparison if we ask similar questions across the other four counties. We also have the district comparisons for each of the questions because our vendor tracks how, uh, the results they get per district. But in the survey itself, we also ask information about age, gender, income, how long they've been in the county, housing situation. Um, so there, again, very, many ways to look at the data and then compare, cross compare. Since we have limited time today, any kind of comparison differences, I'll, we'll only focus on county and district for today. And here I just want to include a, a reference slide for the, a map of the county shaded by the various districts. Um, in case anybody in the public decides to review, they can kind of see when we look at those comparisons and the highlights, what those districts um, are covering. And then one last thing before going to the highlights is here, uh, is a logo on the left of our strategic plan that was implemented last year. So our new, our new mission, vision, values and priorities. Uh, so of those five priorities, four of them are community facing. One is internal facing. Because the resident survey is a community facing tool, we're gonna, when we look at the highlights, we're only gonna focus on the community facing priorities. So jumping into the highlights here, first I want to just call out some of the key findings from Polco's report. Not all the findings, but, but some of them I think are, have a positive uh, thing to, to share here. So eight out of, eight out of ten residents in Olmsted County rate, rate the county as either excellent or a good place to live. Eight out of ten feel very or somewhat safe in their neighborhood during the day from violent crime and from property crime. And in all these three areas, we saw increases from the twenty twenty-two survey results. When it comes to national benchmarks, uh, the, some of the, some of them, there's not a exhaustive list, but some that um, rated highly above. Uh, higher than the national benchmarks were availability of affordable quality healthcare, availability of affordable quality mental healthcare and public health services. And then now going into highlights based on our priorities, first starting with the priority of community safety and wellbeing, mainly because that one also covers a lot of our quality of life questions. So for each of these priorities, we asked a custom question this year uh, related to that priority. So for this one, we asked residents to rate how well Olmsted County keeps our community safe. And ensures access to programs and services that in, that improve quality of life. And it's, it was a four-point likelihood scale, again, between excellent, good, fair and poor. Where when, when scoring it to, to get an overall average score, overall, overall average score for this question was sixty. So again, within that excellent to good range. Uh, just below good. And then there you can see the average ratings per district for this question. And then we have a question here that asks about overall quality of life in Olmsted County. And this question we've been asking since we started the survey since two thousand eight. Uh, and it's also a four-point likelihood scale between excellent and poor. And here in the top middle uh, is a line chart that shows what the overall average rating has been for this question uh, since two thousand eight, where you see a steady. Kind of um, in the seventies. Uh, and then most recently there was a, a drop um, for, down to, down to sixty-five. And even though it was a drop, it's still relatively high within that good to excellent range. Uh, but it is the first time that we have seen a drop for this question. And then you can see the uh, average rating by district on the bottom left for this question. And then as we compare uh, to the other four Minnesota counties that also asked this question, there on the bottom right where uh, the, where Olmsted County is the red bar and then the other counties are to the right of that. are to the right of that. And there were about 20 other quality-of-life-type questions with the template. Since we won't be able to have time to go through all of them, I decided to go with an approach of top-three rating, bottom-three rated for this group of themed questions. I also wanted to focus on questions that we tended to also ask in previous surveys as well. So for our top three quality-of-life questions, we have Olmsted County as a place to work, Olmsted County as a place to raise a family, and Olmsted County as a place to live. And then for our bottom three is Olmsted County as a place to retire, availability of affordable childcare, and availability of affordable housing. And so even for these bottom three here, these are probably going to be our areas for opportunities for improvement. I know available to affordable housing, one that we've asked over the years, that one tends to be one that we kind of struggle with having on a lower rating for quality of life. But to the right is a legend there that shows what the comparisons are for national benchmarks that are color-coded. So if any of them are a black bar, it basically means it's similar to the national benchmark averages. So even for the ones that are bottom three, other communities that ask these questions get similar ratings. And at the very top is shaded in green, so Olmsted County is a place to work. That one's higher than national benchmark averages. And to be higher, you have to be 10 to 20 points above the average of the grouping. Then for our questions around safety, again, sticking with that top-three, bottom-three approach, our top three questions around safety are feeling safe in our neighborhood during the day, feeling safe from fire, flood, and natural disaster, and from violent crime. And then our bottom three are safe from drunk or impaired drivers on county roads, overall feelings of safety in Olmsted County, and from distracted drivers on county roads. So for the bottom three, the ones that are white bars, those are our custom questions that we retained, and so those ones don't have national benchmarks to compare to. But for the others, the other ones mostly similar to national benchmarks, except for safe from fire, flood, and natural disaster, which came in higher than national benchmarks. Then looking at county services that we provide that align with this priority around safety and well-being, again, sticking with the top-three, bottom-three average ratings. So our top three average county service ratings were sheriff's office, law enforcement services, safe drinking water, and public health services. And then our bottom three were emergency preparedness, sheriff's office, crime prevention services, and traffic enforcement. Now, even though we have our bottom three and top three, for the most part, if you look at the average rating, they're all within their 60s, in the 60s range. So they're all relatively high still, within that good to excellent range when it comes to that four-point scale. And they all rate similar to the national benchmark averages. It's just something to add context to the data. And then you can see from public health services shaded green, it comes in higher than national benchmark averages. Looking at the next priority around community trust and engagement, we asked a custom question for this one that asked residents to rate how well Olmsted County earns community trust through engagement, collaboration, and public reliable service. And here, the overall average rating on that four-point scale is 54, so right in the middle between fair and good, closer to good. And then the average rating there by district for this question. Here, we also ask questions about overall government performance questions that align with this priority. And sticking to that top-three, bottom-three format, our top three average ratings were treating residents with respect, being honest, and treating all residents fairly. Our bottom three were overall confidence in Olmsted County government, informing residents about issues facing the community, and being open and transparent to the public. And even though this is our kind of top three, bottom three, you can see that the average rating is all, they're all within their 50s, so they're all right in the middle on that four-point scale average, so between fair and good. So this is probably the group of themed questions that we probably have, we can say is our area where we have opportunities for improvement if we can, going forward. But when compared to national benchmark averages, they all rate similar. So other local governments that ask this of the residents also get similar results. When it comes to county services that align with this priority, we had three. So to the left there is elections, and that was one of our custom questions that we retained, and that one had a high rating. In the survey, we specifically call out the absentee ballot voting and voter registration process. And then the other two are overall customer service by Olmsted County employees and public information services, which also relatively had higher ratings and compared similar to national benchmarks. For the public information services in the survey, we call it specifically the county website, social media accounts, and news service, I think that was. Moving on to the next priority is environment sustainability. So we asked a custom question that asked residents to rate how well Olmsted County leads in sustainable practices. And the overall average there was 54, so again, between fair and good, closer to good. And then you have the average ratings there of the various districts for that custom For county services that align with this priority, we had four. So yard waste drop-off and compost pickup, stormwater management, recycling and drop-off services, and preservation of natural areas. All of them had relatively high ratings. And of course, you can see from the various colors, we had some that were, for example, yard waste drop-off had much higher comparisons to the national benchmarks. So to be much higher is to be 20 points plus above the average with the grouping, and then the two in the middle being higher, so 10 to 20, about 10 to 20 points above the average. And then the last one to the right there is similar, so positive highlights there. Then finally, with the last priority around responsible growth and development. So our custom question for this one was asking residents to rate how well Olmsted County anticipates and adapts to the needs of a growing community. And the average rating there was 52. So again, right in the middle again, between fair and good, and then the average rating there by district for that question. And then here also, we had some additional government performance questions related to this priority, so there were three of them. So generally acting in the best interest of the community, the overall direction that Olmsted County is taking, and the values of services for the taxes paid to Olmsted County. So these were similar to the other government performance questions, most of them in the 50s, some in the 40s. Again, another group of questions that we probably see as opportunities for improvement, but they also rate similar to national benchmark averages as well, so. And then county services that align with this priority, we had three of them, so county parks. And in the survey, we call out each of the county parks, and then recreation centers or facilities, and we call it specifically Grand Park on the survey, and then land use planning and zoning. And as you can see here, they all, compared to national benchmarks, higher than national benchmark averages. Then finally, so we looked to try to expand diversity, equity, and inclusion questions back in 2022 because we had only asked about, we had only asked one DEI-type question over the years. And this is about the community in general, not just about the government. So the one question that we had always asked from the beginning, and I think we had borrowed it from the vendor, was the one right in the middle with an average rating of 57, openness and acceptance of the community towards people of diverse backgrounds. That's the one we've asked since 2008, and it has remained steady in that similar rating since then. So and then also, it compares similar to national benchmarks. For the others, so again, I forgot to mention, in 2022, we had tried to expand it from one to five, but then the template asked seven, so we have six new ones that are DEI-related. So of those six new ones, the two top ones were attracting people from diverse backgrounds, and valuing respecting residents from diverse backgrounds, which ranked higher than national benchmark averages. And then below those two, we had making all residents feel welcome, that openness and acceptance one that we've asked since 2008. And then below that, overall sense of community in Olmsted County. And then the last two, taking care of vulnerable residents and residents' connection and engagement with their community. So all the rest of them rate similar to national benchmarks. And so there at the bottom, I'd say those are areas we can always try to work towards improving as well. So in summary, overall, residents report high quality of life, and that's remained relatively high, similar to other national benchmarks, but we did see a drop, slight drop this time around for the overall quality of life question. Compared to national benchmarks, residents feel overall, Olmsted County is a good place to work and raise a family, but there do remain some stubborn areas around affordable housing and childcare. And then when it came to questions around our strategic plan priorities, especially the ones that ask specifically about the priorities, community safety and well-being rated the highest at 60. And then when it came to county services that align with either environmental sustainability or responsible growth and development, so like the parks, yard waste drop-off, recycling, Grand Park question, many of those questions rated higher, or much higher than national benchmarks. And then where we have some areas for improvement, so there's opportunities to exist in enhancing the community trust and engagement priority, especially as it relates to those questions that are government performance-related. So for next steps, we now hope to continue reviewing these results with the various divisions, looking at their questions that are relative to their programs and services within their divisions. So working with them, as well as within our department, continuing to align our work with the priorities established in the strategic plan. And we do hope to offer in the future this opportunity for future residents to provide that input, that voice through this resident survey, just so we can continue to track these quality-of-life questions and overall ratings around county services and government Any questions, can also contact our department director, Deborah, Deborah Mill.
Any questions?
I have a quick question. You did connect or collect demographic data. Can you just speak at a high level on those demographics of these 1,000 residents?
Yeah, shoot, I forgot to quickly reference. I can get back to you exactly what the percentage breakouts were on the main report, but yes, we did collect demographic information, race, ethnicity, age, and gender, and that is in the main report from Polk. We do tend to stubbornly hear from mostly older, older white adults who are homeowners on this survey. So one thing I didn't mention, just because it didn't, we, this year and last year, we did try to offer an additional, what's called an open participation survey. It comes at no cost, but, so the first survey is the randomly selected households, but then we also offer later on an open survey that just has asked the same questions. And then we tried to work with community partners, try to hear from more voices that we tend not to hear, so younger, non-white residents. But unfortunately, last time as well as this time, we just didn't hear from many different people that wasn't already similar to our demographic, typical demographic residents that respond to this.
Mr., was that the end of your questions, Michelle? Mr. Espinoza, thank you for this presentation. Is there any way for you to track if you're tending to survey the same people year after year, or if that pool is becoming more diverse?
Thank you, Commissioner. I can't, yeah, I can't recall because we, through a third-party vendor, have them track, and so I have to keep it anonymous. I can probably follow up with the vendor to see if they might have that comparison information, maybe by address or something, but that is a good question. I don't, I can't recall if we know. Do you mean like if we're sending the same survey to the same residents?
Yep.
I can probably ask the vendor to see if maybe they might have information about that, follow back up.
I would be interested in that if you find it.
So.
Another quick question. In reading the supplemental report and the main report, there were some questions asked about how often they interact or visit county facilities, et cetera. I'm aware that many of our departments do ongoing customer service reports, et cetera. So can you just talk a little bit about how you digest that? Obviously, that's they're interacting with county services, so you know, we have a little more information on how they're working with this, and they've actually experienced services, so how that's used continually to look at our services and improve services in combination with surveys like this.
So you asked about the question more about if whether they came to the, to the office, right, to the office?
Yeah, and you may not, maybe, Deborah, as far as, you know, departments are constantly collecting data, this is just one tool really that we look at to understand how citizens look at customer service, et cetera, across our many services.
Yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you for the question, Commissioner Rossman. As the end slide noted, Fermin does meet with each of the departments and divisions after the results, and so we do go through those, talk about possible areas for improvement. I know then departments take that into consideration as they're making their own plans, whether that's related to specific services, as you're saying, customer service, you know, outreach, things of that nature. So there is, aside from this overall, lots of information to digest, there is all of the parts and pieces that really have to be addressed more at the department level or even program and service level. There was one overall question that was reported in there about our overall customer service, and that has tended to be very high. And in the past, we have had additional breakdowns, which you might have seen in the very last page, I think, of the supplemental report. It talks about courteousness, how courteous, how knowledgeable, and so forth. We actually had to cut that this time because we were absolutely out of space and would have had to add another page. So that is something I would like to add back in in the future so that we can keep getting that little bit more granular information about our customer service. But we've, all the years that we've done it, we've rated quite high on that particular question.
Just really appreciate the commitment to continuous improvement and understanding how we do a better job in delivering services.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Fermin, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we are on to board and committee reports. Start it, Bob, you're in.
Nothing to report.
Okay, Brian.
Over reporting.
Just one briefly, at the last board meeting, I let you all know that I had the opportunity, would soon have the opportunity to go to the cities and tour a couple waste management facilities. That was really eye-opening for me. The biggest thing was in going through a MRF there, being able to visualize what they have in place and what's going to appear in our MRF and what that's going to look like, as well as them speaking to current challenges, you know, what kind of waste they're seeing come through the stream. So I've, I mentioned that to Tony, and he's going to work to get us a tour at one of those facilities, anyone who wants to go. I just think the opportunity to see some of that in action as we put forth plans to build the MRF here in Olmsted County just give us a better vision of what we're working towards.
That's great.
Nothing today.
Earl.
Nothing to report.
Greg. Okay, well, I'll report that we had a retreat, and we had a ceremonial dig for breaking ground for our exhibition center, the 80,000-square-foot facility that, haven't been out there, is a big equipment out there yet?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Anybody?
Hopefully soon, if they're not already. So that's a big deal for Olmsted County. And all seven commissioners were there. And I'll end with today's quote from the Dalai Lama. He says, "If you think you are too small to make a difference, try sleeping with a mosquito." Entertained most adjourned.